Call this meeting to order and we'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Riles. Commissioner Verba.
Present.
Commissioner Bailey.
Present.
Commissioner Cardoza.
Present.
Chair Miller has an excused absence. Commissioner Green.
Present.
Commissioner Bunch.
Good evening.
Vice Chair Bartholomew.
Here.
And Commissioner Larson.
Present.
Do we have an approval for the minutes?
I motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Next on our agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding the Albany Development Code amendments described in Planning File CP-02-24, DC-04-24. Have all commission members received a copy of the agenda packet materials and are you all familiar with them?
Yes.
Yes.
I call to order this legislative public hearing at 5:17 PM. If you wish to testify, there are two options available which were described on the agenda. At this time, I call for a reading of the meeting procedures.
Thank you. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the Planning Commission and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards that staff will describe or other criteria in the Conference of Planner Development Code that you believe apply to the decision.
At this time, I call for a staff report from Project Planner Liz Olmstead.
Good evening. So tonight, we have before you Comprehensive Plan and Development Code Amendments, Planning File CP-02-24 and DC-04-24. These amendments are to enact the recommendations from the Housing Implementation Plan that was adopted in 2023. So the summary of the amendments, so as I stated before, these are actions identified from the Housing Implementation Plan. These, HIP recommends priority strategies supporting needed housing. Albany's housing stock is in need of more diverse options such as smaller homes, single level homes, accessory dwelling units, middle housing, apartments and condominiums, affordable housing, as well as accessible housing. So here's a summary of the proposed amendments. The details can be found in the packet. We're proposing to increase flexibility for ADUs, encourage and facilitate small houses, encourage more usable yards, and encourage cottage cluster housing in tiny home cottages.
Clusters.
The amendments also support higher density housing. That happens, you can read it, sorry. And then supporting more affordable and accessible housing and requiring green space in residential subdivisions. Comprehensive Plan Amendments and Development Code Amendments need to adhere to the criteria in the code. Criterion one means that it has to follow the statewide planning goals. This is also the same criteria for Albany Development Code Amendments. So the first goal that this relates to is Goal One, citizen involvement. We held seven focus group meetings, an online survey, we had a project website, sent emails, and then public notices and hearings in accordance with the Oregon Administrative Rules. We did receive public comment that we have included in the packet for the Planning Commission. The goals also relate to land use planning, housing, economic development, transportation, and urbanization. Detailed findings can be found in the packet. Criterion two is a legislative amendment is needed to meet changing conditions and new laws. So staff found the proposed Comprehensive Plan text amendments are needed for consistency with the Albany Development Code Amendments, and Albany will continue to need more housing development of a range of types, sizes, and costs to meet the future needs of the residents. So for the Albany Development Code Criterion findings, as I stated before, this is the same as Criterion one for the Comprehensive Plan. And Criterion two is the proposed amendments are consistent with the applicable Development Code and base zone purpose statements. So Planning Commission has options for the Comp Plan text amendments and Development Code Amendments, recommend city council approve as presented or with modifications. But this is a Type Four legislative process. The Planning Commission will recommend to city council, and the city council will be the final decision maker. As you see in the staff report, we placed an ad in the Democrat Herald, sent a Measure 56 mailing, and then sent notice to the Department of Land Conservation Counties and posted on the city website. So the timeline is after Planning Commission reviews and recommends to city council. City council will have first and second readings of the ordinance, and the effective date of the ordinance would be 30 days from that date.
Do any commission members have clarifying questions regarding the staff report? We will now be taking public testimony. Please state your name and mailing address for the record. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and provide it to the clerk. Virtual attendees, please email it to cdaa@albanyoregon.gov. Written testimony that was submitted by the deadline was emailed to commission earlier today and provided on the dais. Those who registered to speak during this meeting would be called upon to present verbal testimony. The first name, I think, is Carrie Hofer?
Hofer.
Hofer. Audrey is our last person. Okay. Audrey?
Hello, my name is Audrey Eldridge. I live at 1705 Northwest Ravenwood Drive in Albany, and I'm presenting some of our comments based on the code changes. I am representing North Albany Neighborhood Association, and there are several general areas for my comments. These include removing barriers for small houses, eliminating the requirement to hold public hearings on cluster developments, the need to provide bus option requirements in areas where compact development is allowed, including middle housing. Additionally, I need clarification to understand the fourplex housing put into these code changes. The proposed changes to allow for smaller houses were presented in part due to smaller houses not penciling out on standard lot sizes or setback. The city states smaller houses are desired by empty nesters and young adults, and they provide more affordable opportunities for homeownerships. These proposed changes are to the benefit of those who are not living in the area to be developed and for the developers, and does not address the concerns of the people who live in the area about traffic, public safety, or property values. Please consider that the existing middle housing rules will already impact North Albany character and traffic. This was with the ability only to construct four times the amount of housing units on a lot that was previously zoned for a single family. Now, if our reading of tables are correct, then there is potential that these housing units can double. This is a massive change, and the community should be given more time to respond. And I have to say, I am not a planning expert, but I do represent some of the feelings and thoughts that people have from North Albany, and I do think that the other side of the coin needs to be looked at, not just planning rules, but how they impact people. Holding important meetings such as this one in the middle of the holiday season does not show much concern for the residents who will be impacted but may not have the time to respond during the holiday season. We ask the Planning Commission to hold a second hearing after the holidays to allow for adequate public input and before the city council holds a hearing on the proposed rules. This would be Option Three, which I didn't see up there, but I'm putting it in. In Article 12, the city requires public improvements such as bikeways, sidewalks, and public water and sanitary sewer hookups. However, there is no mention of providing bus services in the area where middle housing developments are planned. The city should mandate that all middle housing developments be located within 1,000 feet of an active bus stop, and that the bus routes must at a minimum provide multiple trip options both in the morning and middle late afternoons. This is the minimum the city can do to alleviate some of the traffic and public safety in areas where the city is now looking to potentially double that impact by increasing the number of houses that could be built. As a reminder, bus service to most of North Albany, except for the Hickory Street area, was eliminated right before the 80-plus Riverwood Crossing townhouse development was proposed and approved. And there was a proposed code change which eliminates some of the public hearing process, and while it was unclear to me whether or not this was going to also include middle housing, I believe that the staff has verified that middle housing would also be not required to have any public hearing process. And so there's a critical change in the neighborhood, but what it seems like we're not going to have that public hearing potential there. And again, I'm not a planning expert. It's just the reading of what I'm getting from this. So I also question what the difference is between a fourplex and an apartment building? Because according to the changes in the code, except where middle housing land division has occurred, the city can approve a fourplex on one lot without property divisions. Well, this really sounds like an apartment house to me. Doesn't look like there's giving four people the chance of homeownership. So I do hope that the council hears the size of North Albany residents who have gone from a guarantee of single-family homes on approximately 10,000 square foot lots in the annexed areas to four townhouses, lots per lot, now to apartment houses. And please understand that Albany is choosing to be stricter than state law. And in North Albany, this has the potential of increasing the public safety and traffic impacts at the same time decreasing property values. We ask you not to approve these changes today and to conduct an additional public hearing to allow the citizens a chance to respond. And I should say, even though I've been very active with the city and planning and middle housing, I did not receive a postcard of this, notice of this public hearing.
Carrie Hofer? Or Hope?
Thank you for letting me. Hello, Carrie Hofer, 5218 Northwest Dumbec Avenue, Albany. My concern is primarily around the traffic congestion in North Albany area. So for example, I came in this morning, it took me almost 20 minutes to get here. I'm 4.8 miles away. According to MapQuest, it would take 4.8 minutes to get, or it should be 12 minutes to get here, the 4.8 miles. So substantially longer, which is a concern. In 2023, 59 houses were built in North Albany, and I went with, to the Albany Police Department, and that resulted in a 4% increase in traffic accidents. So if you continue to build, 2024 is looking to be that much or more, according to the police department. Which brings me to my next point is what triggers a formal traffic study? Because in my opinion, you guys can say, let's build 500 houses, but you have no way of ensuring that you've got proper transportation needs under consideration. So what does it take to get a formal traffic study conducted specifically for North Albany? And again, that's where I think most congestion is. Finally, and I don't mean this as a scare tactic, but again, twice the amount of time to get from North Albany into town, I'm wondering if the city council is prepared for lawsuits for emergency personnel being delayed to get to a person or to get to the hospital or the fire department to get to a house to protect lives. That should be considered very seriously. Alright, that's it. Thank you.
I'm glad I have help because I missed Jamie Smith, who had pre-registered. Thank you, sir.
Good evening to you all. Jamie Smith, 1112 37th Avenue, Southwest. Two items to cover this evening. One, maximize waste system for pump station. Number two, manage growth, and I'll spend more time on that topic. Maximize waste system for pump station. This is a selfish reminder from me, but to pertain to other areas of the city. There's no ability to build on 37th Avenue Southwest or 39th Avenue Southwest due to Oak Creek Pump Station being at its maximum capacity. There is flat land on my property, the neighbor's property, along with the city property that includes wetlands on the other streets. But these properties cannot be built on due to no waste capacity available for the varied properties. It can be done, waste lines for these properties, but at a cost, hundreds of thousands of dollars to upgrade the pump station for increased capacity. There have been no developers willing to make the investment. The juice has not been worth the squeeze, might I say. This is all information that I've received third-hand over my 25 years of living in the neighborhood. This information has come from the City of Albany Building Officials, City Hall Offices. The reminder is this: Recently, a neighbor who backs up to 39th Avenue Southwest submitted to grow their property with more dwellings, but they were denied due to this information. But on 37th Avenue Southwest, a building official had made a statement to a neighbor that they have some property they could be built on. This is contradictory and confusing information. In addition, we purchased, my wife and I, our home in this area to be in a rural setting but yet be within the city limits. The increase of cars and traffic would not be enjoyed. I understand that this is a mail order went out, and I did receive this. It's for residential zoning property, over half an acre residential property zone, residential medium density or medium density attached. Please, if there's any wasted capacity issues in the different areas of the city, if there's flat property that can have shelter built on them, please do not give hope to the landowners, developers, or others that there are areas to build on just because there's open, available flat property. Next topic, managing growth. Humans deserve and have the right to feed water, to food, water, and shelter. Shelter is a topic of this meeting. Police, fire, and police and public works need to grow with the population growth. We need managed growth, and I'll use that term as we go. My sharing this issue and information is from a 30,000-foot view, so I'll give you some objective facts, hypotheses, and life experiences along with third-party information. I want to be accurate with this commission, not just give you an opinion. Maintenance is a hard thing. Let it be a bigger house, city growth, a new yard, newly written policy, all these things need ongoing follow-up and maintenance. I have this issue as well as some of you do personally and professionally. I make the same point with city growth and population increase. When this type of decision is made, it is imperative that we are prepared for the various things that population and housing increase results in. Before the growth occurs, we need to be prepared to widen streets, have an increase in supporting businesses, be prepared with the city budget to fund personnel, supporting structures, and the financial and physical maintenance of housing and population growth. I refer to the document East Albany Plan, which I have this, and I'll submit when we're done. In that, which was in 2022, it was for the East Albany Plan. I stated to my family and friends when this East Development started at Knox Butte, it needs five lanes to move the traffic east and west with a center lane for buses or other multimodal transportation. As I read this draft report, I was right, and I'm just a layperson in the public. Our city is congested to the north and to the east. Traffic has become congested. We all know that we will get this with growth, but we as a city have bottlenecked ourselves with no plan for increased traffic. Please, build the roads first, and they will come. Also, if we have bottlenecked ourselves due to the lack of expanding businesses outward to the suburb developments of Albany, everyone comes into town to do most of business. We've created this. Albany has good schools, lower housing prices, transit roads, which is good for city access to get into the city and also for industry. But we need to increase our infrastructure to support growth. This includes improving the streets, growing the necessary supporting businesses outwardly, growing public works, growing the fire department, and growing the police department in proportion to the growth. We recently approved a $9 increase to help with the city's street maintenance. This will not support the need, and this is reactionary. What are we doing for public works with the increase of streets to maintain, as well as the pipes and the utilities under the streets? Public Works will need to grow its budget, equipment, personnel, and physical property. As was stated in council meeting here December 11th, property that's in city property in North Albany Road at the Roundabout, this area says that this property possibly will be used for a maintenance yard. Public Works needs to grow out as housing and population grow. Please refer to the ICMA document that is here, and that's titled Survey Shows Decrease in Average Number of Police and Fire Per Capita. This was done in 2014. I hypothesize that this has occurred as a result of population growth and no increase to the fire and police essential services. Growth occurred with no plan for essential services. The growth is great, but we need to make sure that we're growing accordingly. Our population of City of Albany is approximately 60,000. We have a daily transient population of that which is double due to the I-5 freeway and Highway 34. Albany Fire Department serves this transient community daily, 24/7. From ICMA documents that I have read, and that I can't produce right now, but I've read them in the past, the full-time employee FTE calculation for fire personnel is 1.5 FTE per thousand population. This would be 90 FTE for the daily shift work. We're below this now. As for fire, the FTE calculations range from 1.8 to 2.6 per thousand in population. This is dependent on the area type it serves. Police is behind. I do not have data for public works, but I'm sure some can be found, and I'm happy to search. Police and fire both have response times they need to strive towards. Fire stations, police substations need to grow out to accomplish response times for the community and for insurance ratings. It is stated, numbers never lie. And I'm not here to spout off numbers to support my points today, but rather to show that I am competent, I'm concerned about our population growth, and how we as a city are proceeding. Please pause and consider this information. As was stated in the last council meeting on December 11th, we do not have to implement the Housing Implementation Plan. It is a recommendation by the state. I do appreciate all of your work, and I know it's diligent and it's difficult. Manage growth, please. The only discussion on this, HIP, has been development of property, taxation, building permits, et cetera. Not a word about the impact of so many things of the proposed growth. You know, there's building permit for ingress and egress of doors and windows. This is fire code, building code. It's the same thing. We have situations in North Albany, as this gentleman spoke of, also in the area of 53rd and other areas. We have one way in. I don't understand why we don't have ingress and egress in some of these areas for transit. Please support essential services, police, fire, public works, a plan for improved street systems, and to see a strategic business growth so as to not bottleneck and monopolize Albany's core. Please, let us pause and consider these things. Sincere happy holidays to you all, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Allen? No, Jim Allen? The next person is Brad Dennis.
Hi, I'm Brad Dennis. I live in North Albany. I've lived in North Albany for about 40 years and was involved during this health hazard annexation back in about 1989. That North Albany was not part of the City of Albany at that time. And by a narrow margin of only about 100 votes, the citizens of North Albany voted to annex into the City of Albany, and that was in exchange for a promise of 10,000 square foot lots. And so I have a hard time forgetting that promise that was made back in about 1989, and I recognize that it was a pretty narrow vote. It was, I guess, lucky from the city's point of view that this went through because a lot of the citizens were not in favor of becoming part of the City of Albany. And now that we are, these new regulations make it really challenging. I know that there have evidently been other focus group meetings. I saw the slide up there that indicated there was seven focus groups. I'm sorry, I did not attend one of those. I sort of vaguely remember maybe seeing an email. As far as it being advertised in the newspaper, I'd say that's a pretty worthless way of getting the word out. For the meeting tonight, I posted a thing in Facebook in the North Albany Neighborhoods Group to about 2,800 people. Only maybe one or two people showed up as a result of that Facebook posting. It's hard to get citizen involvement, and especially at this time of the year with holidays, you know, people are just getting off work, and it's like now they don't have time to come to a meeting like this. But I can assure you, if you had an accurate way of finding out what the citizens of Albany feel, I don't believe they would be in favor of this proposal. I guess that's about all I would have to say. I just feel like the timing of this meeting is challenging. As Audrey said earlier, have a second meeting, find some other way to, even, so I'm chair of the North Albany Neighborhood Association. We could even put together a meeting of our members and have a presentation made to us about what is all of this involve, what's intended by all of this. You know, Audrey spent hours and hours going through the 115 pages. I can guarantee you that most people aren't going to do that to really become informed. And so that would be my request is, let's have a meeting. I'm sure we could get people out to discuss this. We turned out 100 people for a meeting on middle housing earlier in the year, and I bet you we could get a group of people together again. So thank you.
Thank you. That's the last person. Are there any that have signed up? We will now move to taking public testimony from those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you're attending virtually, turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon by the chair and unmute. If you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so the chair can call on you to speak. Does any member of the audience wish to speak about the application? If so, please state your name, address, and make any comments you may have for the Planning Commission. Anyone else? Does the staff wish to respond to any testimony presented?
I think I could probably just respond to any questions you have. I will just make a few comments so that we sent out numerous emails to an interested parties list, and we've been doing outreach for several years, developing the Housing Implementation Plan, the middle housing, and we have quite a large mailing list, and we've offered to meet with people in person, be invited to groups that could have, you know, happily would have attended in North Albany Neighborhood Association. We are happy to meet around people's times to explain the changes. I will note that there aren't any changes to where triplexes and fourplexes are allowed. Those are types of middle housing. It was state law that required us to allow middle housing types where we allow single detached dwellings. Apartments, our multi-dwelling units are considered five or more. That was state law. We had to change our definitions because of that. The city does do facility plans, and it's based on population growth. We plan around population growth. Those are forecasted numbers. We report building permit data to Portland State University every year. We report building permit data to Portland State University every year. They predict our population growth along with all the cities in Oregon, and those facility plans are based on population growth. You know, I meet and often talk and communicate with the different departments that develop facility plans that are planning for, you know, all of the infrastructure. And I will note that the transportation systems plan is hopefully going to be underway very soon, early in 2025. And that will reflect, you know, the latest population growth projections and also some of the changes that we've been needing to make to provide more housing variety. And I think that's it, and I'm happy to answer questions a little bit later.
Thank you. Does anyone have procedural questions they would like to raise at this time? If so, please raise your hand to be called upon, or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name so that the chair can call on you to speak. I declare this public hearing closed at 5:46 PM. Does the Planning Commission wish to discuss these amendments or ask questions of the staff?
I just had one question for staff, based on somebody brought up. What does trigger transportation survey? You know, I've noticed, you know, over the couple of years, you know, a 20, 25-minute commute from the hospital home to now frequently being 45 minutes. Like what, you know, short of a large new development coming in, what would trigger
I think it's 100 trips or more during peak hours, so that would trigger a transportation study that would be required to be submitted with an application for development. So it's not going to be triggered for a really small subdivision, but, you know, maybe an apartment complex or a larger subdivision will trigger that.
So even, you know, a bunch of different small, you know, 20 houses here, like that's not ever going to trigger one?
Not according to the current data, and I'm not in Public Works, Transportation person. We didn't invite, I forgot to see if anyone wanted to attend the meeting tonight, but it does take quite a few trips. The peak hour trips, I can't remember what the number is per household, but as an example and concerns from North Albany, there is a 22-lot subdivision that became 80 townhomes because of the middle housing requirements that state law required us to adopt, and we are not any stricter... I mean, we're not more, we're not allowing more housing than what state law allows. We took the bare minimum of what we could do with lot sizes. But that development ended up actually not having 100 trips during peak trip hour, so it was just under. So when there is a study, that study would look at, you know, what improvements might be needed to the transportation systems such as, you know, turning movements, the traffic light, you know, nearby, et cetera. But that wasn't triggered for that development. Now, the rule planning for roads happens with the transportation systems plan, and so that's where you would look at street classifications, traffic volumes, the design of the streets, all that kind of, you know, how do we make sure people can get to where they need to go safely, whether it's in their car or, you know, another mode.
So along the lines of that, what you were saying about the traffic city, when was the last, you know, when the last traffic study was in that area, North Albany?
I don't do current developments, so I'm just not sure when traffic studies were required, but, I mean, I know some of the larger developments did trigger traffic studies that are along Crocker and Benton Woods and those. So, and Liz may know more, but I'm not on the front lines for those, but we do have a whole team representing different departments within the city. Every time a development application comes in, they're looking at all of these issues and concerns. Is the water system adequate? Is this transportation system adequate? The fire department attends to make sure that they can get in and around and navigate the streets, for example, that they have more than one way in and out, et cetera. So there is a team that evaluates development applications for some of those issues.
And then another, just shifting gears a little bit, there was a question brought up about bus service and transportation. Can the city require a certain level of bus service?
So as part of the TSP, there is a transit plan that Albany, actually the Cascades West Council of Governments, there's a, we're part of the Albany Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. They will modify transportation plans based on needs, and there was a stop up in North Albany up on Gibson Hill, and because ridership was so low, it was removed. That's not to say that it couldn't come back later when there are more people that want to ride it. So it's sort of a chicken and egg with the number of people. And so the Climate Friendly Areas Project is one example of where we're trying to encourage and promote and support development, sorry, development where we have transit lines. So we're not trying to put higher density, more housing necessarily in our, what I consider lower density neighborhoods that aren't near a transit line, but rather the zoning and planning is trying to encourage development where people could have access to transit. These changes would allow for smaller lot, smaller houses on smaller lots. There would be maybe some more households, but this, that was the biggest thing that came up with people across the spectrum, that we don't have enough small houses being built. Almost all the houses are over 1,400 square feet. I mean, I don't think, except for our tiny home village. But anyway, so we're really responding to the community for these recommendations that came, that were included in the Housing Implementation Plan.
Stacy, I have a couple of things I'd like to ask for clarification. So in there, there was some discussion about the medium-density residential and changes to the high-density residential for the number of stories. And so I think it's great that, you know, we are trying to figure out ways instead of being able to grow out, but how do we also grow up? So I noticed that there was a lot of additions related to the bonus for the height specifically on page 53. So it looks like that it's really an incentive that builders could go higher, but it's not necessarily a financial incentive unless maybe it's going to be coupled with like a different tax incentive. So I was hoping to understand better what the benefit would be and how do we actually do the encouragement to build up because going above three stories is kind of cost prohibitive many times. Clarification?
So we made a few adjustments to the bonus provisions for affordable housing. There were some state law changes that we had to adopt to allow similar bonuses, increased height and density for affordable housing, and allowing it in more places around the city, not in low-density residential zones, but in commercial zones. But we did have some bonus provisions. One of them is related to different types of housing, affordable and also workforce housing up to 120%. So we just modified those slightly, but also tried to have them align with what state law requirements are for affordable housing. I think the issue really comes down to the cost of land and whether it then becomes more feasible from a construction standpoint to go up more than, we typically see just three stories, and you could do four stories in some of our zones. We're not seeing that yet. There was a market analysis done for what types of housing could we expect to see. This was actually done mostly to see what would happen in our climate-friendly areas where we want to see the higher buildings, but, you know, it looked sort of citywide. And we're sort of on the cusp of not being quite a large enough city where, or where property values have increased as much as maybe in some other larger cities where developers are going up because of the changes to the building code. And one of the biggest issues is actually accessibility. There is an actual requirement to put in an elevator, but over a certain number of stories, you know, you, you know, an elevator may be triggered. I mean, I don't know that answered your question, but, you know, at least we're enabling development to go taller in these zones, whether they, we didn't change the height in the high-density zones, but there are provisions for certain types of housing to go higher if they want to, and just need to have that in place. Things are changing sort of quickly, I think, in the landscape of, you know, just take cars, you know, e-cars and that kind of thing, and I don't know that construction methods will change that much, but...
Thank you for that. Another question, kind of shifting gears a little bit. So for the Hackelman-Montith district, it did say to allow for infilling compatible with historic character, to allow for additional housing type, but it's kind of unclear, and I didn't see any additional verbiage in the document provided about what it means in terms of compatible.
Can you tell me what you're referring, do you have a page number? I'm not sure what you're referring to, but the Hackelman-Montith district is basically a single dwelling unit district that allows middle housing types. So we do require a historic review for new development that's within the historic districts. So I'm just not sure, and maybe Liz, you can find the location of that.
That's page 37. Eight?
Yeah, so we changed the zoning name descriptions. We had, to better reflect the kinds of uses that are permitted in the zone. So that's just a description of the kind of uses that are allowed. And so, like, so we already, we do have requirements that, we have design standards for all of our housing types, and then we also require historic review for those that are in the historic districts. So is there anything else you want to add, Liz?
I believe there's also a certain setback, an additional setback that's required from a historic structure to help with the compatibility.
I think that's everything I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners online have any questions for staff?
Yes, Madam Chair. This is...
Mr. Green?
Yeah, this is Ron Green. Regarding, I think this is on page 12, just a clarification or definition, under statewide planning goal nine, economic development, goal, goal two, chapter three of the ACD or ACP, goal two, provide a supportive environment for the development and expansion of desired businesses. I just wonder, just to give me an idea of that definition, what is a desired business and how is that decided? What are the, what are the criteria for a desired business?
That's a good question. That's just an existing goal that has actually been in our plan for a really long time, the Conference of Plan. We have statewide planning goals, economic development is one of those. I can't tell you exactly what, I know that we, living wage jobs is a big focus, businesses that pay, you know, living wages, our industries and higher-paying jobs. Those are probably what we consider desire businesses, but you're right, that word's subjective, and it may be out of context without seeing the rest of the, that section of the Conference of Plan.
Any other commissioners?
And I saw in the report that it was either 60 feet or seven stories on the height. Which one is it?
I'm not sure what you're referring to, but...
Well, so far is the height, and that's what I saw in two different places. One said the height was going to be 60 feet, and the other said seven stories.
So each zone has a different height? I mean, do you know what table, what page the table is on?
No, I don't.
Oh, I'm asking Liz.
Oh.
Page 50.
Page 50. Okay, so if you were to look at page 50, let me just get there. So we're not proposing any changes to the height for any of the residential zones. There are also different heights and the mixed use in commercial zones. So the number of stories is really determinate upon the actual height of each floor, but typically you would, if you had an eight to 10-foot lumber, dimensional lumber, you know, a 60-foot building typically might get five stories. I mean, we don't count all the way to the peak of the roof, so the number of floors, we're just trying to give you an example of how many stories could be built with the different heights that we may be listed. I'm not exactly sure where that reference came up, but it's based on height. The number of stories is really determined on how a building is constructed and how tall their floors are. Did that answer your question, Karen?
Well, it just, when I saw seven stories, it just did not fit into the atmosphere of Albany, you know? So I was like, are they all of a sudden going to allow seven stories now, or?
No, no, there's no changes to the heights in the zones. The, do you have, do you have Article 3, the page 50? So the maximum height in the RM zone is 45 feet, so you could maybe do four stories. Depends on your roof and configuration of your roof, the maximum height, and these are just current heights. We didn't change anything for the heights. I'm just trying to figure out where I am on my table. 60 feet is the current maximum height in the RMA zone, which is residential medium-density attached. We're not changing that. And then the high-density residential zoning district is currently only applied in East Albany, and that's 75 feet. So the height is the maximum. The number of stories is going to be dependent on how tall each floor is.
Any other discussion amongst the commissioners? Do I hear a motion?
Just to get the conversation started. I move that the Planning Commission recommend that the City Council approve the proposed comprehensive text, planned text amendment in Albany Development Code amendments under Planning Files CP 0124 and DC 0424. In the December 6, 2024 staff report, this motion is based on findings and conclusions in the staff report and findings in support of the application made during deliberations on this matter.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Theodore. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Looks like we have a unanimous vote. The Albany City Council will hold a public hearing on these amendments on Wednesday, January 22, 2025 at 6:00 PM. I did pass over the business from the public, but that person who signed up spoke during the hearing part. Jamie? Oh, okay, thank you. Any business from the commission?
I would just like to say that I appreciate all the work that staff has put into. It's a lot to go over, and it's a lot even for us going through 136 pages of just changes and trying to make sure we understand. So I want to thank the staff for their patience as we ask questions and thank the public for bringing concerns to us. And the last thing that I want to say here is that this will be my last Planning Commission meeting, as I did not resubmit my application. So it's been an honor to experience being a part of the So it's been an honor to experience being a part of the planning commission from this perspective as well as resident.
Thank you. Any other commissioners?
I'd like to echo those comments. Thank you, staff. And regarding, just a little on why I voted the way I did. When it comes to governing, it's always messy. It's never an ideal solution. And affordable housing is a very, very serious issue in this community. And really, when it comes to getting every, all your ducks in a row and all that, your ducks will never be in a row when you're working in city government. And so I am very much looking forward to the TSP when that's coming through. And thank you, staff, for everything you've done.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other business from the commissioners online?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Go ahead.
I just want, just a couple of thoughts that we are, we're looking at some very big problems that I don't think we've ever experienced in this community or in this country, which is the lack of affordable housing. And the fact that we want to, those of us who are property owners want to keep our value of our property and not see that slip away is, when you think about it, the complete anathema of making housing affordable. Because we have all depended upon a constantly increasing value in our property and in our housing. And we've treated housing not so much as shelter for all the people in our community, but as investments for our retirement and for our children's college and just our general financial well-being. It's been going on for many decades, and I think now the piper has to be paid. And we're seeing an untenable situation as it plays out in the affordability of housing for those people who are not fortunate enough already to be property owners. Additionally, that's one thought, and one second thought, and I'll try to be brief. The transportation issue, of course, what we're seeing is that gasoline is still cheap, and people, it doesn't seem to ever want to go up and stay up in order to actually change behavior. People really want to drive. They want that convenience of driving. And we've got one bridge over the Willamette River, you know, well, two bridges, one each way. I don't think that we're going to see a solution to that issue either. So I want to, I want to add my thanks to the staff for doing what really may, from a distance, look like just tinkering around the edges on all these ideas to try to get more available housing for people that need it. But when we consider those big constraints that they're under, we have to understand that there's just no fix. There's no, there's no easy fix, I should say. I hope I'm wrong if I say there's no fix at all. But considering these issues and how they really play out, I think that, you know, our staff deserve our thanks and our support. And I certainly hope that they'll continue in the new year to not lose faith in their ability to make things better. So thanks again to them.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Ceci? Karen?
Yeah, I just wanted to say too that all of these rules and regulations are not going to happen tomorrow. You know, they may not even happen in a year or five years or whatever. But the options are there, you know. I think from what I understand, there's just a handful of ADU permits that were even requested. So it's, you know, I don't, I don't, I think you have this vision of urban sprawl all of a sudden, you know, but it will be gradual, and it will be available in time. That's it.
You, Commissioner Cardova. If there are no more business from the commissioners, we'll turn to staff updates.
Well, thank you. I just want to say to the public that I'm still available to meet with anybody to help you understand what the proposed changes are. After January, if you want to, after the holidays, there's time before the council meeting on the 22nd. I know that, you know, our staff are always available to meet and talk about any concerns you have. And I know that several attended the meeting have a representative, Bushard Davis. So we do hear, I live in Albany. I mean, you know, we're all, we're trying to figure out how to navigate a variety of needs and balance all those needs. For the planning commission, I will just say that, you know, I did submit a sheet, gave you a sheet one of the last times I was here, maybe at a work session. And I want the public to know that we had several work sessions with the planning commission so that they could understand these concepts, and we could get input so that they have been, you know, considering these items and learning more about them before the public hearing. I did want to just say that we're, your next meeting date in 2025, we'll let you know as soon as we know. But, you know, we are really busy, and we're doing our best to schedule things. But some things may need more time. But there probably will not be a work session on January 13th. So with that, we do appreciate your hard work and attention to this. And, you know, we're always here to answer questions for legislative. Actually, planning commission, the public can ask staff questions at any time. And it's totally appropriate to do that at any time. And I do appreciate the input and thoughtfulness you've put into this work. And I did want to say, we did have a consultant team help us with some of the hip implementation work. And Kate Rogers with MIG has been online, but Liz handled everything. And we have appreciated their support to help with, it is a lot of work. Although the changes are relatively minor, they just affect a lot of, I mean, there are quite a few changes, but it's not as many, it just affects a lot of pages in the code. So we appreciate everyone's help with that. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, at 6:12 PM, meeting is adjourned.